Okay, good evening everyone. We have an open meeting with, call for any comments from the public. Anyone have any comments they want to make to the board? Okay. Next thing, review of the minutes from our special meeting on May 31st, 2016. You all have copies of that and I would like a motion to approve those minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes. Second.
Discussion. Hold in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Make a motion to adjourn. Our next item, our bills. You've all received those in your mailbox earlier today. Four pages. There's no additions or deletions. Thank you, sir.
Make a motion, the bill to be paid. Second.
Discussion.
I just have one question. Just wondering why that we have to take the time, our people have to take the time, or they take the time to drive to Champlain Ace. We've got a considerable amount of productivity time being lost when they're going up there and coming back and it's natural for everyone to say hi to people or whatever. And we've got a store right here across the road that perhaps is an ability that we could patronize. Is that on it?
I've asked that question before and said that there's limited supply in what they have here and what events they can't turn around, but that's what the explanation was I was saying.
If they could check here first, that would be nice. That would save a lot of labor time. And for the reasons.
Yeah, sir.
Yep, thank you.
I know that they also mentioned, Chez E is more of a building supply place versus a hardware store.
Yeah.
In other words, you know, if you're gonna build a house and you need to buy your cabinets and your lumber and your designs there, whereas if you need a metric pole, you have to go to Ace. But certainly we want to patronize our whole business. I agree with you. Okay, further discussion. Hold in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Make a motion to adjourn. Do we have any correspondence?
No correspondence.
Any correspondence? We love the absence of our board today, so our village administrator was planning to move over. Tried to pass that off on the treasurer and said he was too busy for that, so. Alright, so I have some reports for you. Starting with update on the athletic policy. Athletic insurance policy. At the last meeting, we left it at, we had heard that our broker, not the insurance provider, thought that the athletic policy was probably something we should do. And we didn't have a solid quote and trusty guard, you had mentioned that. It's always nice to have that in front. Our administrator got ahold of our insurance carrier, which is Nyger New York Municipal Insurance Percival. And it appears we are covered with the present policy and with the waiver holding agreement on our general, current general liability policy. There's no additional insurance that needs to be purchased. Our current general liability does have a goodwill provision called MedPay and there's a $5,000 personal limit. So as far as our provider of insurance, New York Municipal Insurance Percival, we don't give it. So as we discussed, the possibility we can reap things as they have been and we should be recovered. If there, if there ever was a lawsuit, our general liability would also cover that. Simply, as for the waiver, it's a good first line of defense. The suit was filed, they would use that as a first available piece of information for the case. If that fails, they sue, we're still covered by general liability. So we have a MedPay, everything seems to be covered and it's been working well and it should be continued. So we don't need a motion or anything to continue, but that's perhaps the information. Is everybody satisfied with that?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay. So we can move on from that. Next item. Deals with brush. We agreed that we're not gonna do a separate week of brush pickups, although I think Garcia Aron reported there was several places in the village where there was quite a bit of brush. I know you personally spoke to some of the people.
Yes.
Explained that there wasn't gonna be any brush pickup.
Right, yeah. I see the guy on Lake Street here already removed his from the sidewalk, or on the other side of the sidewalk.
Well, I did some research on it. I called New York State Environmental Conservation, who started this burning ban. And later on, it was pretty hard to find the right person. They sent me to a department who said, "Why are you calling us?" I said, "'Cause they sent me to you." And as you can imagine, it went down the line. I finally got a call on the 2nd of June from Jim Cooton. And he's from New York State D E C Division of Air Resources. The bottom line is, well, let me read this to you. Burning in an open fire provided is not contrary to any law regulation will be allowed as follows: On-site burning in any town. What that means, I'll have you define this with that. On-site burning means if you've collected the brush from that site, not brought there. In any town with total population less than 20,000 of downed limbs of branches, including branches with attached leaves or needles, less than six inches of layer and eight feet in length between May 15th and the following March 15th. For the purposes of this subdivision, the total population of town shall include the population of any village or portion thereof located within the town. However, this subdivision shall not be construed to allow burning within any village. The bottom line is, there is no permit available for us to get a burning. We can't even apply for one because one doesn't exist. So our only option, well, one of the things Mr. Cooton suggested was we start a landfill. We have a lot of land. Put brush in the landfill, I suppose. We really don't have that kind of acreage to do. And of course, we have to chip in, we know how manpower intensive that is. So at this, at this stage, from what I could find, there really isn't a means for us to collect brush and dispose of it.
Unless we chip it.
Unless we chip it. Now, I talked to Mr. Palki, Superintendent of Land Works. And he said he'd be willing to set up a block, you know, an enclosure over there that we have for the grass. We could try it for two weeks to see what we get for volume and then see how we could deal with it. But from what I've seen around the village, it, it, there's, it, it would require weekly chipping, so you know, probably one man or one and a half men all day long. And I, we don't have that luxury.
No.
That I can see. So barring a change in D E C regulations, even if there was a permit process, I said, you know, we're little, what do you need that done up? He said, "There isn't any." This doesn't, we don't have it. There's no burning. The air quality issues become such that they said, you know, it's, it's not something that we don't, we not only don't wanna encourage it, we wanna discourage it. So there we are. What are your thoughts?
Well, we put a bunker down there to put the brush in, that when we try it for two weeks and like you say, see what the volume is, as long as you don't throw them garbage or tires or stuff like we had before, that's how come we disposed of it before.
Well, even if we were to have it for just two weeks and the people that have it inside the, they could bring it down and put it there and then dispose it off. Two weeks we pick it up and two weeks we'll chip it up there. Because you can't tie somebody up there on a daily basis to chip brush on.
Oh, no.
That's crazy.
Yeah, so I'm saying, so.
But what are they gonna do with the brushes beside the road? They'll be held by stores there on Champlain Street, there's a pile of brush there.
Well, it's hot going.
Is it? Yeah.
I mean, you can, I mean.
It's my understanding that Code Enforcement sent a gentleman a letter, saying he had to be out of there by today or tomorrow. This gentleman up here. Wrote a letter and he was removing it yesterday. Right, it's all gone. Yeah. Over at, I see like this afternoon over on Champlain Street, that pile hasn't been touched. And he got a letter last week with Code Enforcement.
But it's not like all of us don't agree, we, it'd be nice to have it. If we, if we had the space and if we had the ability to burn this stuff, I think all of us would agree that we do it. Playing the sentiment, I mean, I would, I would say do it. We don't have that.
No.
Opening it up for two weeks, you know, I'm not really sure what that's gonna do other than how you're gonna stop it once you open it. People continue to come down. As it is now, Mr. Palki told me that he's still finding stuff in the, in the leaves, like big, big pieces of cedar, which he removes and has a pilot, he's gonna chip eventually. Do you remember the mountain that we had?
Oh, yeah.
When people would bring it, I mean, it was, it was as big.
Well, the thing of it is, if, if, if we have a big windstorm or something like that, then people are heard are gonna have some limbs to get rid of and stuff like that, I mean, you know. If we had this bunker, then they could throw them in there or whatever. Or either that or wait until spring or fall when they have a fall pickup.
We do it twice a year. You know, that's what we do. We do it for a week, solid week. It takes everybody, electric and the.
Oh, yeah.
Department of Public Works, they're all dedicated to just that.
Yeah.
And if something else pops up, they're gonna be taken off that. So you know, I, I think it's a slippery slope when you start.
Well, not only that, I think a lot of people, some of the people I talked to said that the article in the paper wasn't big enough. It was only, I mean, you had a hard time to see it. You know, and you could put it in the paper and you could put it on whatever, the internet they call it or whatever and.
Well, some, we don't really, we have a, yeah, we can put it on our homepage.
Website or whatever.
Yeah. But we, we can also, I mean, we could put something in the electric bill, but not everybody fits the electric bill. I mean, not all residents have an electric bill. I mean, some of the renters don't have it, I mean, but we could try that.
Most of, all electric, all the people that have apartments have electric bills.
Well, not landlords, basically, totally.
Very few, very few landlords pay.
What I'm saying is there's a potential for that, if you're there. But as far as instant for right now, do you see any, any alternative other than the fact that we've done it for a week? We said we're not gonna do it again till the fall. We leave it at that or do you wanna, you wanna try to do something else?
There's nothing we can do.
We can't, yeah, we can't start another week of pickup.
No.
And we don't really have a way of disposing.
I just, I just say that we, if there was, if it was done wrong, if it was done indirectly, we learn from that and in the fall, we advertise it. You know, a little boulder wherever it's printed and the five, a majority of the residents are happy with it twice a year that they get. The ones I spoke with said they're welcome to have it, very happy to have it, because you don't see that in a lot of towns and villages. We do it twice a year.
Yeah. Alright, so the consensus is then that we're gonna, we'll leave it twice a year. In the fall, we'll advertise it more aggressively. Do you wanna try and put something in the electric bill?
I think so. I think that'd be better.
Alright, well, we'll, we'll see what, you know, how feasible that is, see if we can do that and we'll get a, and we'll get, we'll put it on the website, we'll put it in, maybe ask for a bigger display than the paper, you know, get it in more than one. Maybe we can get it in the sign.
Put it on our sign up there.
Put it on our sign up there.
There you go.
We can get the legion sign.
Move it, now it's on. Well, a little joint from all over here, that's all that is, but yeah, that's a good idea. Put it, you know, use the, use the sign for that too, all the other good things we choose for. Okay, I take care of that. We did have a meeting with Tony Motifery of Municipal Electric Utilities Association. Trusty Arnold, myself, Mr. Palki, the administrator, Mr. LeBumbar, and our treasurer, Mr. Reginald, we're all there. Basically, he came up to give us some assurance that in spite of, if our, if our load decreases, we are still allocated 14 megawatts of hydropower per year. And we'll continue to get that until at least 2025. They're currently in negotiations for an extension from that date, but right now, all we can say is until 2025, we have that. That's a part of a, it was called a Lehman Roosevelt Bill, created the NAGA Redevelopment Act. That included a fair share provision of hydroelectric power to municipal apartments. That was called the preference clause. So the preference clause exists, if we use 10,000 megawatts this year, we still are entitled to 14,000 megawatts next year. So you know, any concerns that anyone had on the board or otherwise, Mr. Motifery, he's you know, the chief lobbyist for the N B U A, and he, he provided us a knowledgeable opinion and some documentation that we could find in order to back that up. So I know Mr. Palki was happy about that, because he had the extra concern. And we're trusting, I know he followed closely and you agree that that was pretty productive, that we had that so we're.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
We were right there.
Yeah, very informed.
Alright, so that was, that was our meeting. Running through right along, the next item I have is fishing at the village pier. As you all know, at our village pier, there's a sign that indicates no fishing. Well, our village administrator brought it to my attention. She has been down there and she kinda scratching her head because it's sort of an unenforceable thing. Someone was fishing down there and she just went along. It was, I don't know, there was a knife laying on the ground or something, says that hurt, and she threw it away. Flew in back and found out exactly what we proposed when this pier was built. And it was under the state comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. The first goal we used on, and that's on pages five and four, were to improve and expand water-oriented recreation opportunities. Rousas Point Scenic Pier would increase public picking, day use, fishing, and relaxation opportunities in an area of limited public access to Champlain. There is no public recreation facility in the Clint County area that provides residents with mobility challenges, the experiences of enjoying the lake from a pier. Rousas Point Scenic Pier would allow persons with mobility challenges to enjoy the beauty of the lake from a previously unavailable point of view, from 570 feet from the shore. Wheelchair-bound residents of New York State, Southern residents in Rousas Point, and Secret Heds Nursing Home, which of course doesn't exist anymore, 260 Lake Street, could make regular use of the pier for relaxing, fishing, or other activities. Another score goal was to improve public access to waterfront resources in Rousas Point. Under, another part of our application says how, operation means, how will the project be operated, allowed activities and hours. The scenic pier will be open to the public, as are all other recreation facilities in the village of Rousas Point. Residents and visitors will be free to enjoy the pier for strolling, relaxation, and fishing. In groups, we'll be able to use it as a group for community gathering and events. So the question begs, in our application, in funding for this pier, one of the things that we said was, people that normally couldn't get down there to do a little bit of fishing, drop line, and water, now can. You know, it doesn't put it out as like a fishing pier on Laguna Beach that goes out, you know, quarter mile, but it, it still says it's there. But just one, in light of what we had for, in light of what we had in our application, do you think that the no fishing, or the prohibition against fishing in a pier is a good thing? We should maintain it? Is it, is it something that you view as unsafe or unclean or what, what are your feelings on it?
I've always said you should be allowed to fish there. They fish all over the place. You're not allowed to fish there, it's crazy.
Okay.
Well, to me, there's not really a lot of other places to fish on the lake shore.
Especially for handicapped.
Yeah.
They can hold themselves right up to the.
Right up to the fence, yeah. I'm just going by the original intention and the way that was written, whatever. But allowed fishing, I can't see a reason why to change it now.
State is extending the. As it is now, it's no fishing.
Right, but the original application, application and the cause for doing this was to allow people to fish.
Well, it was one of the things. I mean, and it doesn't say anything about skateboarding, it doesn't say anything about riding bicycles, and now it's simply talking about strolling, leisurely activities, fishing being a leisurely activity. I don't think there's gonna be any, any, you know, vast tournaments down there. I don't think people are gonna be casting things out and. Well, I'm, I'm talking about from a, if, if you're walking by and I hook one behind your ear and give it a good yank, you're gonna not be very happy.
Right.
But I don't see that as being an admission. But now how would we go about removing that from the sign? That's a pretty, it's a grave sign, I think, isn't it?
That's a detailed sign, yeah.
So. Well, I don't know if we.
I don't know if we could paint over it or not. You better take another good look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just, just cover it.
Yeah.
Put something over it.
Yeah.
Well, we could put something over it, but we'd have to, we'd have to take our time and make sure that it was.
Properly.
Whenever you go down there, put a piece of duct tape on it.
No, no.
You know, it's the whole scenic area, so. So generally, are you guys in favor of removing that ban? Does anybody know why that, that's what I'm there? Is there any discussion about it? Done, we, any of this? Okay, so it'll, that'll remain a mystery to this board. We won't be able to find anything in the previous minutes. I know somebody that was here for all the discussions. Mr. Treasurer, do you remember anything about that?
I don't know what the reason was.
Okay, so let's see what we can find. We'll.
Imagine it's just what you said, you know, when someone might get hooked or.
Yeah.
They leave their worms there or scale fish or.
Yeah. And the tide will wait to come along and take it on. We could go all day long with what could happen, but the fact of the matter is, it was designed and funded for one of the main, excuse me, one of the many, variety of activities listed, specifically this, was fishing. And access, access for people with mobility issues, mobility challenges. And I think that's a, you know, a very important thing and something we have to work at for. Alright, I'll take it upon myself to see what we can come up with in terms of finding a way to.
Need a motion?
I don't know. No. I'll take a look at it. I don't believe there was, I don't think there was any, it's not in the village codes. Undecided to put it on the sign. Undecided. We'll find out. So yeah, please, any of you look at it. If you have, come up with an idea, what you think, my board, you know, let's, let's just work together on this.
Okay.
Okay, moving right along, reported meeting, we had a, Mr. Wong and I had a meeting with Transmission Development Incorporated. That is a group of people that are responsible for designing and installing the electric transmission lines down the lake from Canada. There is a Vermont project as well as a New York project. There's a line going down the Vermont side of the lake, and there's one going down the New York side of the lake, which potentially, well, we don't think of it, but obviously we know that the potential that it could have some effect on, on our village. The, the way this is gonna work is they're gonna have divers come up. They already have a lot of schematics and whatnot, identifying that where our outflow is and then where our intake is. And it looks, you know, from the, from the illustrations, it's quite a ways from there. I mean, we're talking over a thousand, over a thousand feet. But we're gonna have, we're gonna have divers come in, GPS it exactly, you know, compared to where the line's gonna be laid. They're gonna use a jet plow to put this line in, where's water jets blowing it away and then filling in behind it. They have established our models to estimate how big the plume would be from that and how long it would take to settle, how far Berkeley would go, what effect the northern current would have on it. They're going to send us a memo outlining all those specifics. The project isn't, they don't anticipate, at the earliest starting until 2017. They're trying to think of everything. We asked them to make sure in their memo, they mentioned the contingencies that they would have if the plume started to extend farther than they thought, you know, have silk curtains available to put down to prevent that from, from coming towards our water intake. There's, doesn't appear to be any issue with the outflow and from where they're coming, it doesn't, they're not gonna be, they're not gonna be hitting it, that's for sure. And again, we're doing a Vermont, the Vermont plan actually brings it out of Canada, just, just short of where the border road is there and goes out into the lake and go right across to where the parking area is for, on the Vermont side of the bridge. We will actually go up on that and then back down and, you know, we will through that and then back down, they do the vertical drilling and, and move on. At 150-foot depth, up to, from eight feet to 150-foot, it takes them, they can lay about one mile a day. And when they get to the 150-foot depth farther down the lake, it's about seven miles. They're gonna be based, all their equipment, barges, and their barges are coming up in pieces from New York, coming up through the canal system, and they'll assemble it up here and be based in Plattsburgh, because the, the size of dock that they need, that's the only place that they have anything to accommodate that and, and work from that. So as of right now, we don't have the memo yet. When we do, you'll get it and it'll be distributed to you immediately upon our receipt and, you know, we'll, we're, we're planning on meeting with them on a regular basis as this gets closer. They're, they're still pretty much in the planning stages too and the, the project is definitely gonna go forward. Anything, any questions that, that you guys had on that line that maybe we touched on or I haven't touched on? Maybe you guys have been thinking about the code or?
No.
Any event or when, the event when it goes, goes by near our water sources or whatever, can, will we fill our tank to capacity prior to that, just to, just in case the water does get chucked up and up and we have a hard time dealing with it, would that filter?
Oh, yeah, sure. That, that's, that would be a, a good contingency on our part, I would imagine. Again, that there, they do not anticipate anything even coming close. The physics and stuff, that, that just doesn't seem like it's gonna happen, so. That's a good idea. A good contingency. Okay, last, lastly, we have lights on our tennis court. We have 400-watt lights installed. We're now with a new timer that can be adjusted, turn the lights on at nine and off at 11:00. A prior board decision was to leave the lights off at night. So people like last year were playing, pulling their cars over there and playing with headlights and stuff. This, you know, in the summer, it's cooler, it's a good time to play tennis for a couple hours a night. Lights up the basketball courts too. I'm thinking that we have the lights installed. People would have to use the courts and I'm thinking it shouldn't be much of an issue to set that timer on at nine, off at 11:00. And you know, people have to, to get on the court, they can use it, I think, for an hour and then they have to get off and then people are ready to next number one. What are your thoughts on that?
I think it's a good idea. I think it's a good idea, absolutely.
All right. Uh, now I'm gonna have Cody turn one. Uh, turn the timer on, uh, probably starting tomorrow night, nine o'clock, off at eleven. I think it's, you know, we, we have it still as we wanted to make available.
Yeah.
Do you... Okay.
Mayor, will we be addressing the signage that is out there that says the park is closed fifteen minutes before dusk until dawn?
Uh, yeah, we can, we can do that, but except for tennis. We'll, we'll have to, we will definitely have to do that. If the lights are on, I think that's gonna speak for itself that they, they can use them. But it's certainly something we're gonna have to look at, so I'm sure you're gonna remind me of that in the office through a memo and email and by hitting the head when we walk by, so, um, please do that. And we'll, we'll figure out a way, figure out a way to do that. Okay. We're being held on. Trustee Moore, as you can see, is absent tonight. He was on board with the held up. Trustee Ma, do you have something for us?
Well, we received a letter from the Friends of the Stage. They'd like to request permission to build an attached dressing room off the existing stage. They also added if there's any grants available to assist with this task, they would like, you know, they would like to be considered. We also knew that they had thanked us for a time consideration, so I don't know...
We, uh, I know, we just got, we just got the waterfront revitalization, uh, grant applications. Hmm, let me think, late last week, correct, Mr. Bumbard? And, uh, I don't know if that would fit in that. We'd have to check with, uh, Mrs. McMeanness and see what, what she had to say. Or we could just send it to the Friends of the Stage and have them fill it out and we could submit that as one of the projects. And we worked it. I, I certainly am in favor of allowing them to build a attached dressing room. I think it's been, you know, the activities there have been well attended by the village. I think it's a great, a great addition to our, our corporate part. And, uh, and so I would support that, so, uh... I guess we can put this in the form of a motion. I have a motion granting permission for Friends of the Stage, uh, to add a dress, to build an attached dressing room off the existing stage. Do you have a motion for that?
I need the motion to allow it.
I'll second.
Through the discussion?
Uh, do they have, uh, somebody that's gonna build it that's halfway decent? I mean, the structural eyes or...
I'm gonna have to assume they do, uh, based on, based on what they have out there.
We will, we're looking into it right now, but I need your permission first and then go from there, each step. And then go from there and then I'll, I can present the board with the estimate. I know that they have to have a million dollar policy and, you know, so we're just taking it step for step, okay? And you guys are the second step. I've already talked to Clifford Sterling, got the okay from him. Now I'm going to you guys, then we're going back to the committee to discuss it. Then we will get the estimates. I will come back to you guys to make sure you're okay with it, you know? And we'll take each step as it goes until we can, and then we're gonna earn the money for it. Yes.
Okay, so we, we heard those comments from the chairperson of the Friends of the Stage, Mr. Steve Merchant. Thank you for giving us that information.
You're welcome.
And so, uh, the motion that we have and seconded is to give them permission to do so. Any further discussion? Hold on to favor.
I...
The both, or should I carry?
And Mr. Amer, if I can interrupt for just a minute?
Well, Steve, you can do it during the public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Again, again, to me...
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Arnold?
Uh, trash cans on the main street. I'd like to see if the village could purchase some. Cause, uh, like, on, a couple on the main street, downtown, three, four, or whatever.
Why haven't the ones we had?
I have no idea where they are.
We haven't been there for a long time.
Yeah.
We were there a couple of years ago and we're complaining about having to dump them.
Oh, yeah? Well, I don't know where they are now.
Well, I would...
Also up to the railroad station. We gotta have something up the railroad station. I mean, a lot of people getting off and on the train and stuff and, and waiting for the train to get on and they're either eating or drinking something and they just leave the bottles there and stuff and I go pick them up. And every time...
Get them back for the deposit?
No. And the garbage and cigarette packs and stuff there. So what I do, when I collect it all and stuff, I put it in the garbage bag and I bring it down and I tell somebody in the garage or whatever, or the superintendent, public works. I said, I got a bag of garbage from the railroad station. Okay, let's throw it in the dumpster bag there. You know, cause that camera's back there.
You put in the...
Right, yeah, so...
Now, it's from the Amtrak, Amtrak with the train station? Not, not the museum with the train station?
Train station, yeah.
Why don't we make them put a garbage can in? I mean, that's, that's their customers that are doing it, right? Not visitors to the museum.
Yeah.
Have Clifford go up and tell them that they need to put a trash can in there where we're picking up the garbage.
Yeah, well, I'll tell you what, if you can get ahold of somebody from the CP Railroad.
I think this is a...
Yeah, I mean...
...a tremendous opportunity for you to get involved in this and, uh, maybe you could look into where, if, if those garbage cans, which Trustee Ma's talking about still exist, they probably don't. If not, maybe, uh...
Well, I got some, some here that's...
The rest of it?
Yeah. Hundred and forty-nine dollars for this one. The square one.
Aaron, what's in there, a cement?
Uh... No, it's, it's a brown, doesn't lead on it. It's forty-three by sixteen by eighteen. It's forty-two gallon. Okay? And then the other one is a hundred and eighty-nine dollars, or eighty-five dollars. And that is also, uh, but it just got a little hole in the top. But I think the square one would be better than the round one.
Okay, well, why don't you, uh, for the next board meeting, work up, uh, costs, see what, where you'd like to put them, how many you think we need to put out? And, uh, work and make a decision on whether or not to do it.
Okay.
I think...
Well, I know we're gonna get a lot of people that walk their dogs probably, but, you know... But, but that's all right. I mean, at least they throw it in the bushes someplace where they...
Yeah, but I think if you look into it, you're gonna find that in one of the buildings, you'll find the trash cans somewhere.
Yeah. Either that or ask the superintendent where they are or whatever, or...
Totally. By the next meeting, uh, you might have, you know, have, have, uh...
Okay.
Couple of choices and, and, you know, see, make sure we know what they're made out of and, you know, so what you think of their...
Yeah, they don't tip over and stuff.
Their destructibility, you know, so when it comes on, it gets bad and kicks them. They're gonna break their toe in that the garbage can or vice versa, I don't know. So...
Okay.
I think it's, uh, I think it's a good idea to help keep the, keep the village looking, uh, downtown area looking clean. Good idea.
Okay. Okay, that's that. Uh, water plant, uh, is running well. They're, they got, uh, the rest of Lake Street, uh, flush the hydrants, see if we can get our water back to normal and stuff. And a little bit on Champlain Street. They're using, uh, the atom system. They started up the atom system.
Mm-hmm.
Which is running. And industrial system, they changed the filters in that to get more purity of the water and stuff like that. So they're doing, they're doing well in the water plant now. So, that's that. What else have I... Oh, uh... The library, uh, the electric department did a really good job on the painting over there. And also, uh, there was a couple of rotten boards on the library. They changed them, so that's all done.
Looks nice.
Yeah. And, uh, they removed the tree, a dead tree that was over there in the lawn. They removed that and so forth. Uh, Cody and Aaron, uh, fixed the dugouts out here. They put new, uh, siding on the, on the dugouts. And they're gonna paint, so... Other than that, that's about, uh, all I have. Oh, at the meeting, I went to an MEU meeting in Plattsburgh.
Yep.
Last week. Uh, it wasn't really a meeting. Uh, Arsen received, uh, on a board for, uh, thirty years of service, thirty, from the MEUA. And I received it for the village, so...
That was the treasure for the electric department.
Right, yeah.
Thirty years?
Yeah, I guess it was thirty years, Arsen.
I didn't know we were that old.
Yep. So...
When you were four or what?
I met quite a few people down there that I haven't seen in twenty-five years, so they're still around and stuff.
You didn't remember twenty-five years, come on.
Oh, yeah.
What'd you have for lunch?
Primarily.
Okay, you remember, that's good. All right.
My next one.
Thank you for that report, Trey.
Sure.
Uh, Trustee Dart?
Just got a question about our wrestling event. Just to get, it's a curious question, see how we made out? I'd ask the administrator if she has any update on that. May eighteenth, we had a wrestling event here. Did we make any money? Uh, did anything happen? People get knocked out in the ring?
We, the village, only, um, excuse me, we, we recouped the facility rental fee of five hundred dollars. The actual agency that handled the event made the money off the tickets and whatever other sales. And I have not heard what the Booster Club made for the concession stand. It was well attended, um, so I, I think she was pleased. I'm waiting for her to get her accounting specifics together because we're scheduled for another event September, well, I believe.
Okay, so is it worthwhile for the village to hold it again yet? To hold one of those events here again? Was it positive?
I believe it was positive. The feedback I received was that they needed more advertising.
Okay.
They felt that, um, it needed to be better publicized than it was.
That's up to the promoter.
Yeah, that was up to them.
That is up to the promoter, so that, that will be a conversation with them. And we will be reevaluating, um, the facility rental fee as well for the second round.
That's hope they come back and run for most again? Thank you.
Thank you.
So, yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna charge more for the facility rental next month. To generate more revenue and people from that. All right. And then there weren't any, strangely enough, I asked, there weren't any exterior valves and no fighting going on outside the ring, which was pretty good for, you know, it did pretty, pretty...
Did you come down there?
Pretty, huh? No, I wasn't here in town, but I talked to, to, uh, Aaron and, uh, Cody and, and there wasn't, uh, there wasn't anything else going on. So you weren't here either, apparently. Okay, good, we have it under control. All right, some other reports, uh, Mr. Bumbard?
Uh, last meeting, there was a conversation with regards to some repairs that needed to take place at the boat launch. And the loose board was repaired, um, that was on the south side of the building. They are still looking for a replacement van cover. And, um, that is, worst case scenario, I was told, they may have to pack John Fabricate one if they cannot come up with the part, seeing as it's, uh, a few years old. On the civic center personnel, Cody and Aaron will be pressure washing the building and staining it thereafter. And they will also be repainting the decorative metal on the roof of Joyce. The shrubs will be addressed this summer in Arkin Law area. And, um, there were also repairs that were done at the Montgomery Pier. Um, it was mentioned that the benches had spots on them and low and behold, they do. They will be pressure washed as well and evaluated for its effectiveness. Um, at that point, if they feel that they need to be stained, um, they are going to, um... They're going to investigate that too. They have a spare piece of composite that they will test stain first and see how that goes because first blush, you're not supposed to stain the composite. So that is in progress now. Um, the shrubs behind the benches were trimmed at the pier also. And there was a board that was loose there too. And I just wanted to let everyone know that Altona Corrections Crew is coming back on the week of June twentieth. And weather permitting, they'll be cleaning the lake shore before moving on with other projects within the village. They provide us with a great service and it's, we really appreciate all of their help.
I talked to Cody about the benches. And he says when, when they received them benches, it was something like, I don't know, a quart, a quart and a half of stain?
Yes.
So they must be, they could be stained?
Right. That, that is, that is the...
Well, I know, you know what, they can, the, the... The way composite sold is, it's kinda like vinyl siding, vinyl's vinyl and a composite's vinyl. It does change, for instance, I, I know, um, in one area that you work near my house, the deck of the house that you work on is all composite. And that was almost maroon when it started and the weather, it's gray now.
Yeah.
Um, but never, everything stained on it, ever. And, uh...
But you can stain it.
Well, you can, but, you, you know, you, what, what we're saying is if you could pressure wash it and bring it back to a reasonable state, you know, and then periodically instead of starting to add layers and stain them, I mean, I, I don't know. Let's, let's see how the pressure wash goes and then, and also how, uh, if they, if they take a piece that they have left over.
Yeah, I talked to, I talked to Cody today and I told him, I said, well, if you got that stained. He said, well, I don't know if you guys would like that color or whatever. I said, then they get different brown, brown, whatever. And he said, the, the one that they got when the, uh, benches were delivered years ago or whatever, they still got it. But I said, I, I doubt like heck if it's, uh, any more good.
Where were they made from?
I have no idea.
Yeah.
So I said, just, just stain a piece of board, that, that piece that you got broken off in one of the benches, just throw it outside for, for two, three weeks or so outside the building here and leave it there, see what the sun does to it.
Yeah, it's a good test.
Yeah.
We'll see how the pressure wash and all that stuff.
Yeah.
Might as well, gotta investigate all possibilities for sure.
I have contacted the provider of the benches, but I have not received a response yet.
I think that'll probably be the most telling, whatever manufacturer says, this is what we recommend. You know, I think we should follow the manufacturer's recommendations, but, but let's, let's wait and see, see what they say. I'm sure you expect, did you call them or you, you sent them a letter or...
I emailed the contacts that I have, um, who helped replace that broken board that you made reference to.
So you'll probably hear back, you, you've been successful. Okay, great.
Gene just mentioned one more thing about the boat launch. Uh, I noticed the turnbuckle style locks that's down there. You can put the hasp across and you can turn the turnbuckle lock thing. And somebody can get locked in the bathroom, kids can play pranks on each other, whatever. So I, I mentioned it to Cody, if he thought it might be a good idea if he went down there and just put the padlocks on the hasp. So that you can't close the hasp.
Okay.
It was, you know, it was immediate thing, the weekend...
That's good.
It was last Friday afternoon, the weekend was coming and, you know, I didn't want him to get lost in something over the weekend and risk a child being caught in there.
Okay.
The dog's a good idea and I don't know if he did it, but he probably did.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Treasure, do you have anything for us?
We got three, four items here. First of all, I wanna report that the tax bills are sent out, so those are coming in.
Thank you for that. Thank you, that mine.
Are you kidding it?
My hat?
Have you paid him yet?
I wanna report that a new file server has been installed and is working good. They just have to come back and disconnect the old one, they're running parallel right now. Um, I want the board to know that our auditors will be up here June fifteenth and sixteenth. That's Saks BST LLP for a review, so if anybody has any questions for the auditors, they'll be here in those two days. We have had three remote training sessions on our new utility billing software. And as it stands right now, we are planning to go live with new billing software on June twenty-first. The guy will be up here on the twenty-first, twenty-second, and twenty-third for additional training. And help us go live. And help us go live with the new billing software, so.
That's gonna be a seamless transition for the consumer. The consumer's not really gonna see anything different.
Well, the bill's gonna be a lot different.
Still gonna have a high score.
And we're not exactly sure how it's gonna quite look yet, so it's gonna, the first couple of months are probably gonna be different.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how much we can put on the bill or what we can put on the back of the bill and stuff yet.
Okay.
It's a work in progress, but it's.
All right, great.
Going good, so.
Our new server is there. Okay, anybody else here?
That's all I have.
Okay, if, open the meeting to public now. Mr. Merchant, you want to make a statement to us?
Uh, yes, a couple of hands, gonna wait for everybody, yeah.
Anyone else, of course?
Anybody else for it? No? Okay, a couple of things. First, I'm sure the board and the mayor probably know about somebody trying to break it into the stage again. This is the second time since we built it. This time, they stuck something in the lock in the door, turned the tumblers and broke. And we do know, we had it checked with a locksmith and the tumblers were broke from somebody prying it. Any possibility of putting a camera in the back part of that stage? Cause that's second time they've done something. First time, they actually kicked the doors in and then went in and busted every outlet and switch in there and did damage. Seven hundred and fifty dollars, we caught who was and we had him arrested. This time, we don't know. Is it possible to have maybe a light put back there? I don't know if they're doing it at nighttime, daytime, the kids doing it. Somebody said it was a possibility of a stick or something they put in there and turned it, broke it, whatever. Just asking the board if it's a possibility, we could do something.
Why can't we put a light on the building instead of?
Well, you know what, we should probably take this up, you know, as a whole board rather than, you know, just do a one-on-one here.
Right. I know there's cameras in the front. But, you know, maybe a camera in the back might help. Cause it's pretty dark back there too, like a light, but also a camera to see who's doing it. I don't understand why they're doing, there's nothing in there, you know? And we're doing things for free for everybody. But yes, somebody's still trying to do something. And the other thing, and this could go along with possibly the grants that you have from the county. Over the years and even last summer, the elderly folks come to the performances and they'd come up to me and said, any possibility of getting even a porta potty down here or something? We have to walk way back up here to the rec center to go to the bathroom. And for the older folks, it's hard. And they've asked that and I'll check into it and see. So I'm mentioning it to the board. I don't know, and I know you're doing a lot of work with the bike path. I don't know what the plumbing is or is there any possibility of doing anything? But it's been mentioned to me many, many times from different ones, you know? Could you put a bathroom anywhere down through there?
Okay, we'll certainly get this on the agenda for discussion at the next meeting.
Thank you very much. And the last thing, just to let the board know, and I'm sure you know, we have an Elvis impersonator coming from New Jersey. So we're expecting a very, very big crowd in the village, just to let everybody know. I don't know for sure, but I would think that's gonna bring, he's performed for thirty years all over Vegas everywhere. So we're hoping to draw a very, very big crowd from Canada and all over. From what I hear, people have approached me, they're coming and they're bringing friends. There's gonna be a lot of people here. That's July twenty-eighth, six-thirty. It's a Thursday night. And it's one of our performances we have all summer.
We appreciate everything your Friends of the Stage does for your village.
Thank you.
Bringing people in. So I'm sure that will be well attended and, you know, interesting. Don't truly crash in that show now, get over it. I can already see that that's a lot.
Don't dye my hair, boy.
Exactly. All right, at this time, I'd like a motion to enter into executive session to discuss employment history of a particular employee. What are the motions that I?
I make a motion.
Further discussion, all in the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, well, call me, I'm meeting now at the public. Because we appreciate your attendance. We'll take a couple of minutes here for you guys to get ready and then we'll go. Thank you all.